Good morning. It is Wednesday, September 13, 2023. This is a good morning for listening to the Clark County Aging Readiness Plan update and being able to have reactions to it. When you speak about the program, if you would please introduce yourself, that would be very helpful because we have, I think, more people in the hearing room whose names are not listed as participants or panelists, so that would be very helpful. And then following, excuse me, the work session this morning, we will have a council time. And following that, we will have other important conclusions for the day. And meanwhile, let's have staff get us going on the Aging Readiness Plan update. Jenna, are you going to kick it off, or who is?
Susan Ellinger is gonna kick it off for us.
Great.
Thank you, Chair Bowerman. For the record, my name is Susan Ellinger, and with me is Jenna Kaye and Oliver Orshyako, all from Community Planning. So the Commission on Aging is a nine-member volunteer group that's charged with implementing the Aging Readiness Plan. They provide leadership in addressing the needs of the aging community members. The Aging Readiness Plan includes strategies to improve the community's capacity to support its growing older population and ultimately benefits all ages. In late 2021, the Commission on Aging realized that the Aging Readiness Plan was going to be 10 years old, and the plan needed updates in several areas. As part of the budget process, they requested funding for a consultant to help us update the plan, and the funding was approved. And after a request for proposals, a committee selected DUDAC to assist with the project. With me today online is Rose Newberry with DUDAC, who has acted as the project manager for the update. Rose is gonna give you a presentation, and following the presentation, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm now gonna hand it off to Rose.
Hi, can you hear me now? I had a little computer glitch as Susan was talking.
Awesome. We can.
I'm Rose Newberry. I was lucky enough to be the project manager for the Age Readiness Plan, and hopefully my internet will stay good now that I'm unmuted. So today, we'll give you a little bit of the project background, why the Age Readiness Plan was updated, an overview of engagement, a slight overview of the goals and policies in every chapter. I'll explain how to read a strategy, talk about next steps, and then answer any questions you might have. Next slide. So like Susan just said, the original Age Readiness Plan was adopted in 2012 and developed from a lot of community input and continuing collaborative development. It included five chapters: Living Healthier and Longer, Housing Opportunities for Aging Population, Transportation and Mobility, Supporting Your Health While Being Independent, and Turning Silver into Gold, volunteering in the value of seniors in society. It included 91 strategies, and then annual progress reports were created by the Commission on Aging. Next slide. The Age Readiness Plan is a really unique plan and is implemented in a few varying ways. One thing that the Age Readiness Plan does is it highlights practices and recommendations for local jurisdictions. So when the county docs were hoping that both the county, but also all local jurisdictions will review the plan and pick strategies that work best for their situation. It also sets standards for community involvement and monitoring. Again, it can be customized to each jurisdiction. And then it connects planning, advocacy, and service providers. There are a lot of moving parts in making an age-friendly community, including the area on aging and disability services, the emergency responders, and so it seeks to connect all those folk. I'm sorry, my computer, I'm unmuted myself. Was there... I can just go over this whole slide if that works? In the update... Huh?
Sorry, Rose, if you could start this slide again, that'd be great.
Perfect. So the 2012 Plan did a really good job.
Rose, can you hear me?
I was unable to hear you.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. My computer is muting me by default occasionally.
Could you try turning off your camera?
Let's do it. All right. Let's hope this works. All right. Beyond addressing human and natural cost hazards, including the pandemic, we see a more diverse generation of people reaching retirement, both in race, income, but also with new people reaching retirement. We see that sometimes people and their parents are both in retirement, so a really diverse range of needs from a health perspective and quality of life. We also wanted to add monitoring the progress of the plan to see if it was working, and then address some major societal changes: new transportation options, housing costs and housing options, new zoning laws from the state, and an increase in technology and virtual communication in the last decade. Next slide. We also talked where we are in the planning part.
Rose, we are unable to hear you again.
All right, I will start this slide over. So we're now at the end of the planning process. The planning process begun with document review, understanding the 2012 Plan and how it was implemented. This included stakeholder interviews, data gathering and sharing, focus group meetings. We then evaluated the existing 91 strategies, mostly with staff feedback. So when I say "we," that really was mostly a staff using a lot of their time. And then, once we understood what was working, we asked the public for strategy feedback and what strategy should be prioritized, so how to customize them better and what should be done first. We then presented a draft plan, and now we're looking at final plan and adoption. Next slide. We did robust public engagement to make sure that this plan worked for both the older adults in Clark County, but also for the service providers that are responsible for implementing this plan. So we did stakeholder workshops by chapter: transportation, support services, housing, healthy communities, and emergency management. We first asked them what makes a community age-friendly and wrote it up on the virtual whiteboard, as you can see here, and then worked through each of these ideas of, you know, the end goal. Maybe it's accessible or removing language barriers, and then walked through what barriers there might be to creating that and what opportunities there were. Next slide. The next public engagement activity we did, which is after we scored the strategies, was to put every strategy up on a large poster board, as you can see on the screen, and asked participants who, what, where, when, and why this strategy should be implemented. This helped us customize how to implement the idea, for example, locating senior housing near transit. Each strategy had its own board, so we helped a lot of boards in the hearing room, and then responses helped revise and shape strategies, so really understanding how to customize this and how it should be implemented. Next slide.
Rose, we can't hear you again.
As you can see on the screen, we also asked participants to add additional comments via sticky notes. And then, the amount of community support influenced what we called a foundational or priority in the plan. So you can see with each goal, we've highlighted some strategies, those that are first or that are priority. Next slide. I'm gonna give a chapter, a brief overview of the plan. So I'm gonna go through each chapter and the goal, and then give one example strategy, but you can read the strategies up on the screen. Our first chapter was Healthy Communities. I'm gonna do a check-all, a catch-all chapter about healthy food, exercise, and keeping people healthy and active. Our first goal was to provide access to healthy food, which included improving access to farmers' markets. Next slide. Our next goal was to create accessible parks and green spaces, which included adding universal design standards into all public parks. Next slide. Our third goal was to create a welcoming and age-friendly built environment, which included improving the physical safety and security of neighborhoods, especially at night, by adopting SECTED or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design principles. Next slide. Our fourth goal was to develop local and community-based healthcare resources, such as a geriatric mobile outreach program. Next slide. Our fifth goal for Healthy Communities was to provide resources for caregivers, which included partnering with ACTWA and the National Alliance of Mental Endless to find better ways to raise awareness of services for caregivers. Next slide. Our second chapter was our housing chapter, which had...
Rose, we lost you again.
Next slide.
Rose, can you do that slide again?
Yes, I can. So our next chapter was our housing chapter, to provide a range of housing needs for older adults. One strategy here was to allow cohousing in lower-density residential zoning districts. Cohousing is multi-generational living on one property, either in an apartment or in a house. Next slide. Goal two is spread housing that enables people to age in place, so that still staying in their own home, but maybe modifying it to be more friendly as their abilities change. This includes developing standard drawings of age-friendly housing modifications. Next slide. Our third goal was to support the development of more affordable housing, which included promoting higher density and mixed-use development on underused properties. Next slide. Our third chapter was our mobility chapter, to help people get around safely, walking, biking, or using a wheelchair. Our first goal here was to design transit options for older people, people with disability, including infrastructure that is more comfortable for older adults and people with disabilities, so being able to sit at bus stops or get onto transit easier. Next slide. Our second goal was to increase alternative transportation options in areas not well-served by transit lines, including the use of neighborhood electric vehicles or golf carts. Next slide. Our third goal was to design communities for safe walking and rolling for a range of users and abilities, which included expanding the network of complete streets. Next slide. Our fourth goal was promote land use patterns and design standards that encourage walking while rolling in transit use. This included strengthening mobility standards, infrastructure, and new development. Next slide. Our next chapter was our civic involvement chapter, so thinking about how to keep older adults engaged in their communities. Our first goal was to support the efforts of neighbor associations and other volunteer groups that engage older adults. This includes connecting with AARP resources and networks to expand the capacity of local governments. Next slide. Our second goal was to support cross-cultural and international community events, including expanding volunteer opportunities for all older adults. Next slide. Our third goal was to continue to offer a variety of engagement opportunities, both in person and online. This includes expanding broadband access in all areas of the county so that all older adults can participate virtually in events or services. Next slide. Our last chapter and our new chapter was our Emergency Preparedness Chapter. Our first goal was to mitigate the impacts of hazards before they occur. This includes managing the urban forest to enhance public health goals for older adults by providing shade and clean air. Next slide. Our second goal was to prepare for natural hazards of education and communication, including developing older adult-specific alerts and communication channels. Next slide. Our third goal was to provide essential services during hazard events, including improving access to healthcare during hazard events. Next slide. All right, that was an overview of the plan. So the examples I read were strategies. And for each strategy, there's a very detailed implementation framework, which you can see on your screen. So for each strategy, I read you the title. But also, we have on the left-hand side a score. This one is new because it's a new goal. If it had been in the 2012 Plan, we have a score from low to high, explaining how well it was implemented, so that it can be tracked over time. We have resources, so these are clickable links that planners at the county or local governments can use to see how this has been done before, good, successful examples. We have case studies. These are local to either Clark County, Portland, or the state of Washington, of, again, good examples of implementation that planners can use to emulate or copy. And then data, which is how to measure success of this program to see if each year it's doing as intended. On the right-hand side, we have a detailed measure description that explains in detail how this should be implemented. It has the type of policy. This informs the scoring, but also informs kind of what type of planning tool this is. Is this a code change like this one? Is it an advocacy policy? Pulling. So we have all of this. You may want to contact when you're implementing a strategy like this. We define any key terms that we use in the measure description. And with all of that, we're hoping that local planners have the tools they need to identify strategies and implement them in their communities. Next slide. Next steps. We have already talked to Planning Commission in their work session and in their hearing. We're here today for your work session, and then we'll be back on the 26th for the hearing. Next slide. And then again, the ARP is a unique plan in its implementation. It will serve as a tool for the county.
Rose, we lost you again.
I'm gonna start this slide over.
Great, thanks.
The ARP will serve as a unique tool for the county and cities and towns as they prepare their communities for the aging population, notably in their comprehensive plans. It also improves interjurisdictional coordination.
Yeah, Rose, we lost you again. Do you want us to just finish up? Well, we won't hear your answer. So as Rose was mentioning, the Aging Readiness Plan will help serve both the county and cities in Clark County to help implement the Aging Readiness Plan. And we hope that it will improve interjurisdictional coordination between the cities and county. The Commission on Aging has an annual work plan to implement all of the strategies within the plan. And staff, when we are working on implementation, will review the planning, code, and ordinance strategies to help with that implementation. I guess that was the last slide, so do you have any questions for us? Thank you, and do you have any questions for us?
I have a suggestion, if I may.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I've had called to my attention is that many times applicants for assistance in funds that will help support their aging in place, in other words, aging in their homes, is that they are Medicare-eligible, which is understandable because that is an implication for the source of funding in part. But secondly, that they are, as applicants, unable to exit their home. For example, if there is an exterior sidewalk adjoining their driveway or adjoining their property in some way, that they would be ineligible for funding if they are able to open the door from their home and walk out on the sidewalk and then come back into their home. I would encourage you to investigate that a bit, and here's why. Often, this particular requirement is at odds with a doctor's requirement, when they want their patients to be able to open the door and go outside and get a bit of fresh air before they are able to come back in again. So when those two things are at odds, it presents a challenge for how the applicants could deal with that. And if you haven't already taken a look at that, I would encourage you to do so.
Okay, thank you. We don't directly usually have a lot to do with individual homes other than maybe issuing, well, through community development, issuing permits for any improvements that people might like to make. But we do work closely with the Area Agency on Aging of Southwest Washington, Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. And they are a service provider, but also connect with a lot of service providers, and they're a partner of ours, so that's certainly something that we could look into and talk to them about.
Thank you, and I think just finding strategies for applicants to deal effectively with that for their own care would be terrific.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So here, I'm not sure how to paraphrase this or keep it in a positive light, but great work, very complex. I appreciate the briefing as we plan for the future. What I want to focus on is where we are today. Because I see a huge gap. You know, we have thousands of sidewalks broken or not connected, or ramps not put in place for ADA or installed incorrectly. That's today. You know, I brought this up at ECHO yesterday. I had just read a recent article in the Wall Street Journal that, at least in one view, our housing crisis and the fact that baby boomers are now becoming homeless because of fixed incomes, SSI, and just being on social security and no other income, and the ever-increasing rents, has created a housing crisis this country hasn't seen since the Great Recession. I'm talking back in the '30s, not the last decade. So there is somewhat of an emergency, and what I want to focus on is... Ever since I've been a counselor, it's been pretty much one a month, one every other month, where I get homeowners saying, you know, "Our plan was to build an ADU, a mother-in-law unit, have my kids move into the main house, or I want to move my mom or dad here and an ADU." And they're constantly unable to get their permits. And I just told the manager about an instance on this past Monday that I heard from an excavator telling me about a family problem up in the battleground area where they have new construction. They built a house and an ADU, and they can't get occupancy because of some size difference between the house and the ADU. So I have no clear idea of what the rules are. I mean, we have guesthouse rules. I've been told my neighbor has to tear down their old house before they build a new one, whether it has to be attached or detached, where ADUs are allowed. And the cost for permitting is prohibitive for a lot of families to be able to house their aging parents on their same property. So there seems to be this huge gap between what we need right now and what we're planning for the future. And if we do treat this as a housing emergency, maybe we could do something under emergency rules. So I would like to see a work session on what are the ADU rules? How much does it cost? Where can they be placed and where they can't be placed? Where we can build guesthouses and where we can't? You know, some detail so we can get to these issues today. Again, I've been, you know, every, it's been constant. You know, every month or so, I get a complaint from a constituent that they just can't afford the permits or they can't get the permits to house their elderly family. So what can we do about that? Because it seems to be a real gap between permitting rules and existing code and where we eventually want to get to.
So with the Aging Readiness Plan, the strategies in the plan are really aspirational, and they would support a lot of the topics that you're talking about. But there is no code that's associated with this plan. Outside of this plan, I will just make a few comments. For sidewalks and gaps in sidewalks, I know that there is a program through Public Works that deals with gaps in sidewalks regarding smaller housing units, ADUs, and other types of units that might help with aging parents and members of our community. The housing code changes that are currently happening, and we're going back to talk to the Housing Code Forum, those will address some of those issues, and we're going to continue through that set of, or through that project with additional code changes and a second batch, and potentially other batches of code changes that will address some of the issues that you're talking about. I think we all understand that we're, as... I think we all understand that we're, as a nation, behind in addressing the housing crisis, but we are working on code changes that will begin to try to address some of those issues.
Yeah, and just reading in the Columbian today, Vancouver is paying $500,000 for somebody that tripped on a broken sidewalk. So I'm asking the manager, Amber, if we can get a work session on this, if other counselors agree that we have, we need some action today. I, I agree, we need future planning. Everything should be aspirational, but I'm looking for concrete changes today and what we can do identifying the issues that you've just outlined for the future. They exist today, and I think there are solutions today that we could get to.
Counselor Medvedje, I'd give you a thumbs up on that as a number two. I don't know if there's a, a third counselor who would concur with that as well. And I would add one other thing. I, we understand that the code changes are not integral to the Aging Readiness Plan. However, the extent to which your, the, the group can make arrangements to coordinate with those who are in charge of code and making sure that their thought process is concurrent with the Aging Readiness approach, we could make more progress because we're joining forces in that event and joining informed sources in that event. So I, I would support that kind of an approach as a, as a part of the workshop, not workshop, the work session as well. Is there a third counselor who's interested in, in follow-up?
I am.
Chair.
Chair Barman.
Great, thank you.
Chair.
Chair.
Yes.
I have a, I have a few comments. I would be, I guess I would like to expand that potential work session, not just to be ADUs, but there's a number of different options, I think, there's, that I frankly don't know enough about cottage housing and guest worker. And, you know, some of these things are of a temporary nature, but it would be good to understand kind of the whole gamut of options that could be available for, to, to encourage aging in place because I think that, that is a high priority. And one of those things that helps people age in place is the homeowner for seniors tax exemption, which I think the Assessor has done an excellent job in promoting. So I think that could be included in the suite of tools to help with that. But first, I'd just like to thank you. And Rose, thanks for sticking with us with that technology challenges. The, I think this is very opportune and the timing because we're looking at housing options and the comp plan update, a code updates that could go along with that. So I think integrating what the work that you've done, and I think for all of us to keep that lens in place when we're making decisions going forward on those housing options and comp plan will be good. And just a thought, I think it might be good to run all of this by the DEB. And, and it would be, it would be good for them to develop this lens of what, what can be more accessible for our aging population. I know I learned recently that in multifamily housing, if it's three store, you know, three stories, you don't need an elevator. If it's higher than that, you need an elevator. So it would mean that if you're, have difficulty negotiating stairs, you're limited to the first floor. So some of those, some of the, there's probably multiple codes that could be looked at to make things more accessible. But I do think DEB could be an asset in evaluating some of these things and putting some things in place. And, you know, related, I'm glad you mentioned fresh food and access to that food. And I would just mention, there's a resource that you might not be aware of, Second Mile Market and Food Hub. And they aggregate products from local farmers. And then people can just go online and order the things that they want, some of which is delivered. It could be, may need to have more delivery service available, but that could be a, a good useful tool there. Yeah, I think, I think that's all for me. I think for some of us on the council, we're working with our own parents to make sure that they are in the best situation they can be. So I really appreciate this.
Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I definitely agree. I think the workshop about many of the things that we've been discussing would be a great opportunity. Couple, one comment that I would have is I, and I, I apologize if maybe it may have been on there, but I didn't see it. But I would like to look into some form of a mechanism when a permit is pulled for ADA improvements, that there be the ability to somehow waive those fees if, if it's needed. I don't know how we could do something like that, or maybe we would just have to waive them all if it was ADA-related improvements. And the next thing that I would like to ask is, you know, I heard that these are kind of aspirational goals, and I appreciate that. But, and I agree with, with Counselor Medvedje mentioned. So when we talk about what's concrete, you know, what are we doing? What are we going to do? And how, how are we choosing what we're going to do? Because if we get, you know, we approve this plan, what mechanisms do we have to start to check off some of these boxes and get them done? Does it take, you know, conversations with council to prioritize, you know, which projects we are willing to work on and make sure that we fund them appropriately? What, what is the mechanism needed in order to accomplish many of these goals in, in the outline?
So one of the workshops that we had with the community was to prioritize the strategies and goals that are in the plan. And so each goal has one priority strategy that's included with it. And the Commission on Aging is planning to work on those priority strategies first. I also wanted to mention, in relation to Counselor Marshall's comments, we did present this to DEB, just so you're aware, but not as in coordination with the Housing Code or anything like that, just, just the presentation we gave today.
Madam Chair. Can't hear you. You're on mute.
Well, it was off mute. Sorry, I, I was saying thank you to you for leading that great discussion. I think this is a good presentation, and I look forward to this work session because I, I think we do need to focus on what we're doing today and, and helping our elderly today with these ADU and attached, detached, guest home issues. Thank you.
And I would second your thank you. And I'd also ask that the rank order that, that your group gave to the items that you would like to see attended to, if you could share that with council, I would appreciate that. And I think the other counselors would as well because that could help to form a part of our agenda as well because of course, we would want to be in support of the direction that you wish to go. If there are no other contributions at this point in time to the plan update, then we will move on. So let me just check, are there any points that we have not yet made that must be made at this, at this time? Well, we look forward to the public hearing on the 26th and maybe some additional communication between now and then, such as that on the top priorities that your committee shares. And again, thank you very, very much. This was a, my goodness sakes, a thorough report for which we thank you for devoting that level of detail because that's what makes it meaningful for Clark County. So thank you very much. And with that, I believe it is time to move on to council time.